The May 19th meeting of the Marion Town Council will now come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight, like to welcome everyone that's viewing us on the Internet. And we're going to change things around a little bit tonight, but we will start with the invocation given by Chief John Clare, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Those holy and glorious Lord Godfathers who come before you this evening and are first and foremost thankful for redemption in your Son, we're thankful this evening that we're able to live in this town and this part of the nation at this time. We ask that you watch over all the deliberations this evening, and we ask that you watch over all public servants, schoolteachers, nurses, firefighters, police officers, sanitation workers, all give their time and talent to your good. And Lord, this evening we're especially thankful for the long and safe service of April Morgan and Chris.
Yes, Lord.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do need to do the roll call. I see that all members of council are present. Please let the record be quick with that. We will approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make it.
Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make it now.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, approving the minutes. It's unanimous? We need to approve the agenda and we need to amend the agenda, and then we're going to change the agenda around a little bit. So, first of all, we need to add something to the agenda tonight?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We need to add the resolution recognizing fire or, excuse, EMS week.
Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda? That is unanimous. We're going to move our resolutions all up and all together because we've involved so many EMS, so many police officers, and we need to go ahead and get these resolutions done just in case something happens. We want to do it tonight. So, we are going to start with the resolution for April Morgan. Please step in. Everybody can come in.
It's okay. We're not afraid of most of the Sunday.
Well, we're certainly well taken care of tonight.
Okay, the Marion Town Council would like to make the resolution in the honor of April Morgan commemorating her career and retirement. Whereas April Morgan began her career with Marion Police Department on September the 16th, 2000, and whereas April Morgan was promoted to police officer second on the 6th of February, 2004, and whereas April Morgan was promoted to sergeant on the 1st of July, 2014, and whereas April Morgan was elected to retire, has elected to retire as of the 1st of June, 2025. Now therefore be resolved in regular session of the 19th of May, 2025, the Town Council of Marion joins our staff and citizens in expressing our most sincere appreciation to April Morgan for her 25-year career serving our community as professional, dedicated to her commitment and passion for law enforcement, and embody the ideal of the best of an employee of the town of Marion, and wish her well in her retirement. Resolve this the 19th of May, 2025. Signed, Avery S. Cornet, Cindy Stanley.
April, we also have this plaque to commemorate her service, and what you've been waiting for, I think, which is your retirement badge. I want that. But I might just briefly talk about April. I think that it's easy for maybe 25 years of services, really a little bit longer than that, for it to go somewhat unnoticed, but remember, that's 25 years of rotating shifts, 25 years of wearing a run belt, 25 years of crisis interrupted by brief periods of tragedy. And so, 25 years takes an incredible toll on law enforcement officers, and April dedicated 25 years to street-level policing, and that's a little bit different, right? That's 25 years in the, in the front, in the trenches, and I don't think we can thank her enough. April, I, I think she's one of the most, in fact, now she's going to make me cry or something. April is probably one of the most effective first-line supervisors I've ever seen, an incredible street officer. I really appreciate your service, and I know the community and everyone here does too.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Counsel, we need to vote on this. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Now, since we're all lined up, we have a resolution in the appreciation for Police Chief John Patrick Clare.
This one is going to be heartwarming to all of us. I will read this resolution. A resolution in appreciation for Police Chief John Patrick Clare. Whereas John Clare began his law enforcement career in 1999 as a U.S. Army military police officer, and whereas John Clare began his municipal career as chief of police for the town of Dunbury in 2007, later serving with Prince Wiggins Police Department, and as chief of police for Quantico, Virginia, beginning in 2013, and whereas John Clare was appointed chief of police for the town of Marion in 2018, and whereas John Clare reconstructed the agency, implemented evidence-based policing strategies, and oversaw a 35% reduction in crime. His tenure emphasized community engagement, transparency, and professionalism, reshaping the department's identity, both regionally and statewide. During this period, the Marion Police Department secured over $300,000 in federal funding to bring nationally-recognized leadership tactical training to the region, advanced regional officer wellness initiatives, and developed innovative recruitment and retention strategies. And whereas John Clare has accepted the position of chief of police for the town of Blacksburg, now therefore be resolved by the Town Council of Marion, Virginia, in regular session on the 19th of May, 2025, that we extend our most heartfelt appreciation and congratulations for his service, our community, and for his future success, and join together to wish John Clare much continued success in his career. Signed, Mayor Avery S. Cornet, Cindy Stanley, Clerk.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate the resolution this evening, but I do want to make clear that I couldn't have been successful at all without the support of the officers of the Marion Police Department, without the support of the Town Council, and without the support of the citizens. And so, it saddens me to go and move on, but I know that, that we've got an agency that's going to continue to do great things, and again, I just, I thank you. It's been, it's been a great honor serving you.
Thank you. Counsel, we need to vote on this. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. It is official. We have one, please say. We have one more resolution. This is a resolution in recognition of EMS Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025.
Thank you, sir. A resolution in recognition of EMS Week, May 18th through 24th, 2025. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fills the health care gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating EMS Week. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of Marion, Virginia, assembled in regular session this 19th day of May, 2025, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as EMS Week, 2025, with the theme of "We Care For Everyone", and we encourage the community to observe this week and join us as we honor the EMS profession, our EMS providers, and the essential service they provide. Signed, Avery S. Cornet, Mayor, Cindy Stanley, Clerk. Accepting this great honor...
I want you to go right over here. These are the boots on the ground. He's been living right here the ones who are accepting.
All right. There you go. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get everybody, but with the interest of time, we still have to vote on this. Counsel, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you for all that you do. You save lives, you prevent tragedy. The whole crew.
Wonderful.
Thanks, guys.
See y'all.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
April was one of my basketball players.
Oh, I did not know that.
Yep.
You have connections everywhere.
Everywhere, yep.
April will continue to serve the community.
Oh, she was.
I see that we have the Commonwealth's Attorney in the room, or almost in the room. Philip Blevins is here tonight to honor, I'm sure, all of the police officers and EMS, but do you have anything that you would like to say?
Mr. Mayor, I never pass up an opportunity to speak. If I may just have a moment of your time?
You have the floor, sir.
I just wanted to, to say thank you to the council for honoring these fine men and women, and our two heroes who are leading us. Sergeant Morgan has a huge loss for our community, but she's certainly earned that retirement, and it makes, it makes me happy, and I'm glad to be here with you to see you all honor not only Sergeant Morgan and Chief Clare, but also the EMS professionals who, who are serving our community. You may not know this, but the mayor and I actually served on Marion lifesaving crew way back in the day when I was an undergraduate, and that was a very rewarding experience. I have a lot of respect for our fire EMS folks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for coming, unanimous. We appreciate that.
Good to see you. Always.
Okay, we will move right along to the disposition of our business. We have no public hearings, we have no public presentations, so we will move right along to public comment time. We have two people signed up to make public comments, and the first one is J.S. Salley. J.S., if you'd please approach the podium and cite your name and address, please.
I'm J.S. Salley, President of Green Team. I'm here to express my concerns. I haven't said anything the last few times I've been here, but it's time for me to say something because my family ran into an incident on Sunday at about 12 o'clock with a, I don't know who it was, but she had called police department with a full-blown schizophrenic episode going on. And I simply asked Chief Clare if he would give me a copy of the police report, and he said there wasn't no police report. Now, I find that highly unusual. He said that, and Ms. Jennings, I had talked to Ms. Jennings about this, and I was sitting there when he gave her the response, but he said that this is a guy that we've dealt with a few times, and we've been able to talk him down. I don't know how, without a police report, you can establish a persistent code of conduct and action on part of individuals. You know, if I had someone that just called five times DUI, I need a, I need a police report to be able to go to the judge and say, "This guy doesn't deserve a license." Okay, I don't know why a police report was not written, other than it's somewhat of an embarrassment. I understand that. But I have a middle-aged daughter, a son-in-law, and two young children who are here. The son-in-law has, in the past, enjoyed fishing on the middle pole. He went, not this past time, but the previous time he was here, and he said he didn't think he'd be back there because of the degree of disruption in litter that was persistent there. So, the last three times I've been here, I have been relatively quiet, but today I have, I have a complaint, and I want to know what the policy is if somebody goes bonkers on Main Street at 12 o'clock on Sunday. Anybody have any awareness of any policy? Well, I'm telling you, it happened. It happened. And if you want me to bring my daughter here, who lives in another city, then I will make arrangements for her to testify to you what happened. But I'm not happy, as you can probably tell, and I think I'm justifiably not happy. So, I just want to bring this up. I know you all have referenced committee meetings, committee meetings, and having sat where you do, I know how bastardly too many committee meetings could be. It's time to get something done, figure out what kind of positive action you're going to take, and then back up your zoning laws, or establish zoning laws if you don't have them. I don't know what the problem is, but there's a problem here. That's all I've got to say. I'll be looking forward to information coming from you all as to what citizens can expect on Sunday morning at 12 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salley. We'll take your comments into consideration. Next, we have Charles Hayden. Mr. Hayden, please approach the podium.
I'm Charles Hayden, 726 South Church Street, and like you said, I'm a free-for-all visitor here. But I've got some questions. One of them is about the two modelers on South Church Street. They're in the flood zone. I have paperwork clearly says they're in the flood zone. That paperwork, it clearly says if you've got the below type of the flood for the house completely blocked in with, from the foundation. That foundation should have openings built into it to allow the floodwater to pass through from both directions, so it would equal the pressure within that space. They are none. Now, you tell me why that we have an engineer and a flood person allows this to happen? You say he's doing a great job. I don't think he's doing a great job. I don't think you're doing a great job, but not following up and checking on things. Now, he seems to be wonderfully, wonderfully hungover to tell us about our trash. Would you leave the can out too far? He'd go find us, or actually, y'all too. If, when they are putting trash in the truck and it busts, he says, "We gotta pick it up." Well, I've got no strength. State law says if you throw anything on the strip, anybody, you are to remove it. That means the town and people. But now, this thing about the flood, it should have never been, should have never been there, and y'all sit there like gods and pass resolutions of how great y'all are and counsel. Right here, why do I have to do y'all's work? So what else?
Mr. Hayden, thank you for your comments. Do you have copies of your information?
I didn't bring the copies, but I would say that's what I'm talking about. Expect me to do y'all's work?
I simply asked to see what your research has shown, sir. That's, that's all.
I think all codes and all were met, correct, Todd?
Do what?
Todd.
I got a lot of elevation certificates on all of those properties in the flood line.
So, everything was proper, so. Building inspectors inspected too, so. Well, I know, but I'm saying that everything has passed regulations.
No, they haven't passed it. Don't make it.
No, I'm talking about state and, and engineering and all. Well, that's your opinion.
Folks, folks, let's, let's, let's stop with that, please.
Well, I was just making a rebuttal.
I stand Mr. Carter during your time. Let me do that.
Yeah, okay.
Your time is coming up, sir. So that ends our public comment time. And in reverse order?
Hey, I've got here a lady. Do you mind if I stand up and say something?
Um.
Go ahead, exactly. No.
I am not going to tell you no, but you know the procedure. We're going to allow it this time.
It's just a short shock that in reference to Mr. Staley, Roger Robinson, 844 Edmond Drive, and in the past, since I started coming, there have been multiple complaints about people on the Main Street here being in front of businesses doing stuff that is unbecoming. And y'all have been told about it, the police have been told about it. I've had issues out here at the print shop. Police has came, police talked to us, threatened to charge us. Just like he said, when are we going to do something about it? But I am glad I didn't hear homeless because you don't know who these people are because the ones that I have trouble with are not homeless. But somewhere, sometime, somebody's going to have to deal with these people in town. We shouldn't have to come up here and tell y'all to do it. It's something that they need to be told, hey, deal with these people when it happens.
Thank you for your comments. We will take them into consideration. We will move on now with council reports in reverse order. We'll take Mr. Carter's report first.
District Three Board of Governors met this past Thursday night. We're like everybody else, financial, trying to make a budget. We did pass a tentative budget, but federal funding's not solidified by any means, so we don't know exactly. We know what the state funding's going to be, but we don't know what the federal's. We just, like I say, passed a budget tentative, and as everybody knows, a budget's a living, breathing document, it can be changed, and this one will have to be changed because they haven't, federal hadn't passed a budget yet. We've ordered a couple new buses, and we have a couple new members to the board. Some people decided not to run, and so therefore got new members. But it's going smooth considering that we don't know how much money we're going to have to operate on. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Councilman May.
Caring for our community, workdays, it would be this Saturday, well, Saturday, June 7th and 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and that, the registration is across the street at the Royal Presbyterian Church. And if you'd like to do something for the community, like paint sidewalks or things like that, please come out and help. Thank you.
Is that a Saturday and a Sunday?
It's, uh, June 7th and 14th.
Okay.
Sure. Todd, I have some copies of the bulletin that people can put up, and I also have some flyers, if you'd set them over there on the desk. Everyone can grab one of those, and I encourage that participation. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt your time, sir.
Nope, you're good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Atwell.
No report, Your Honor.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes, I've had several compliments about the flags downtown. And may I address something that Mr. Staley said?
It's your time, ma'am.
I would like for someone in the police department to get in touch with Mr. Staley. I know that the phone call was made to the department, so to let him know what happened that day. So can, I guess, would it go to a committee, the police committee, or?
You can make any motion you wish.
Or can we just ask?
You've got your lieutenant standing there.
Where are they? I thought they left.
Lieutenant.
Oh, okay.
Lieutenant testing.
I was looking for them.
You've got two lieutenants standing there.
Both of them, yeah.
Just want to ask you, while Mr. Staley has an issue that he would like to, would you talk with these gentlemen and maybe find out some information after the meeting or before the meeting? And maybe you all could help him? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your cooperation, the two lieutenants. Yes, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer.
I guess to reiterate, Suzy, I would like to know the exact procedure from the lieutenants as well on, I'd like to know the exact procedures also on incidents like this and what we are to do, so hopefully we can get back with Roger and with Mr. Staley.
I think we all, we all need to know, yeah.
And then also, since it's my time, I would like to enforce our ordinance on the camping issues, again, on River Park. I know there's not many up here who want to do that, but I think that's a start. And I know, Todd, I'll let you talk during your time, Todd, but understand we're not really enforcing any of these camping issues. And I've had several complaints myself over the park. People not wanting to walk out there anymore or play in the river. That's all.
Thank you for your report. Vice Mayor Gates.
No report, Your Honor. Oh, yes. I would like if, Mr. Long, if you could get Charlie the certificate and the state codes on those two pieces of property?
Sure.
I wanted in writing, shown to Charlie, how we have conformed to the codes to build those properties. Or Mr. Hayden, excuse me. Nothing else?
Is that sufficient to ensure that action, the request, is that sufficient to ensure that that action takes place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Todd will.
You're the town manager, so.
Yeah, Todd will get it.
Okay. We're good there, then. Anything else, Dr. Gates? Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hayes?
Nothing.
Nothing at this time? Thank you. And I'll speak for just a second in the interest of time, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I attended a very nice event on the Marion Elementary School for Teachers Appreciation Day and worked the lunchroom, worked the lunch shift with all the little kids, and got all kinds of spontaneous hugs and questions, and lots of questions. These young minds are sponges, and they're pretty sweet, too. So that was a lot of fun, a lot of fun for me and good for the teachers. I don't know how anybody does that, so, and under teacher appreciation, if you know a teacher, appreciate them. On the May 12th, I attended an EMS meeting with the county. It's nice to see us working with the county and with all the other agencies. I appreciate the department's professionalism and preparedness. So thank you very much for all of that, sir. We went to WCYB, and Dennis Johnson and I told the people a little bit about the VFW celebrations that are coming up on Memorial Day. And everyone should try to attend the Letters from Home at the Lincoln Theater on?
Sunday.
Sunday. And then the parade begins at 10:00. Dr. Gates is going to line that parade up, am I correct in that, sir?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, so we'll have the parade, and then immediately after the parade, the VFW will have a memorial service at the VFW, pretty much immediately after, and they're giving free hot dogs, free food to anyone that attends, and everyone is welcome, they're feeding the town. I don't know if they're making the coleslaw or buying the coleslaw, but I can already smell it from here. It's going to be good, and it's always good. And I invite everybody to attend, all these events. And thanks to our Public Works for helping with putting up the crosses in the pouring rain, and they are the flags, the crosses at that memorial. I hope it goes nationwide this year. Well, since we're on the internet now, it's worldwide. I just hope that it gets the attention and appreciation that it deserves, all the hard work that the VFW and Public Works and the town and everyone involved in that. I mean, that's one of these things that makes Marion great, and we need to really appreciate all that hard work that they've done. Speaking about flowers, I wasn't speaking about flowers, but all the planters that you see on the street are courtesy of the Wilderness Road Garden Club, and they are well-maintained, and they are very beautiful, and took a picture of a couple beautiful ladies out there today tending those flowers, and that's a real job. And it's the little things that really, really make things up like that. So big appreciation to Wilderness Road Garden Club. Attended the Appalachian Spirit Gallery. It was, as always, a great event. Went to the Saturday Night Cruise Inn. Thank you, Rex. That was fun. That was fun. That was a good time. If you're going to steal a car, that's where you steal it from. Say not. Beautiful, beautiful vehicles there. Nice music, too. We had a meeting today with Tom Barkin from the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, and they were asking all kinds of questions and gathering all kinds of information, and they want to know why Marion is such a success. And it's everybody here, everybody in this room, everybody that just left this room, that's why Marion's a success. It's a success because of the council that we have and have had in the past. It's a success because of all the things that we've done. It's a success because Ken Heath says it's a success. It's a success. But we're getting attention there, and that's a good thing. So we had a good meeting today. Remember, everybody, Caring for Our Community Service Days, June 7th and the 14th, I want everybody to come. I mean, there's something for everybody to do, regardless of age, physical condition, or any other. Your help would be appreciated, and there is a QR code on those forms that you can use to get to the website. There's also a number that you can call. Today, we recorded some radio spots. Alan Kelly helped with that, so listen for Alan Kelly Sunday morning on the radio, he's going to tell you.
Alan is, my name, Alan is still looking for projects.
Yes, we had a meeting just today, and we have lined up several of the projects, and one of the best ones is finishing the landscaping design at the Marion Police Department, and it's beautifully done, and I think that.
They know more of his wife and?
I believe you're right.
Yeah.
The Wilderness Road Garden Club. Yes.
Alan worked at ground last year, and now they're coming back this year and doing some landscaping.
That's the great thing about the volunteers that we have and the groups that we have in Marion, that they work together. They overlap, and that's what makes us a success. And that's why people are coming and looking at us and saying, "Why are you successful?" So we will continue to be as successful as we can. The June Teak Celebration is coming, folks. It's just around the bend. More information will be coming out on that, and as it's available, it will be posted. I want everybody to get behind that, and attend. It's going to be absolutely wonderful event, and I hope it doesn't rain, but if it rains, I guess it will continue anyway. Everyone, visit the farmer's market. There's stuff that you can't get anywhere else in Marion except at the Marion Farmer's Market on Saturdays, right at the parking deck down here in Marion. Seriously, there's some good items there, and there's some good deals and some great vendors, and we need to support that program as much as we can, and your tummy will thank you for it. That is all that I have under the mayor's report. We did have a resolution of appreciation for Chief Claire under that report, but we've already taken care of that, so that ends council's portion of that. We will continue with the attorney's report.
Just for council's information, one's physical conditions or mental health conditions, they're HIPAA-protected. There's actual statute 37.2-804.2 that specifies who the records can be disclosed to, and they're not disclosable to the public. They're private information. So what the courts have the authority to do is, Mount Rogers Community Services Board can go to each of the courts and advise the courts what services they're providing in the community. But as far as an individual, their condition, it's protected, just mental health is the same as physical health, it's protected.
So does that mean Mr. Staley can't find out any information?
That is correct. He wouldn't fall under the code as to who it can be released to. If law enforcement's involved, they can't disclose it.
So the police report?
If there's criminal charges, if it's ongoing, and someone were to ask for that information, the Freedom of Information Act also allows that that can be withheld, that's discretionary. And I, as the FOIA officer, have declined. I, as the FOIA officer, have declined to release that information, and specifically, when it's been requested, Commonwealth Attorney has said, "Please do not disclose, and we have the discretion not to disclose."
So what you're saying, you can't do even a police report?
No, if it's something active, ongoing. Now, if the individual, such as Mr. Staley, if he's there and he observes it, he can go and talk to the mental health provider and provide information that they would put in a report, but he would not be able to?
Do you want to make an appointment? The next time my daughter is, she's back here, makes an appointment, comes in and sees what the problem was, and first thing, I don't know, Mark, I don't know where you're going with this. It's a big, deep shroud, and I hear, I see you keeping on digging when you're already in a hole.
J.S., you've been where we are, and?
I have, and that's why I am here.
And you know you were out of order by speaking, correct, sir?
Well, slap my hand.
No, sir, I'm not going to do that. I have too much respect for you, sir. But please, let's respect everyone's time and respect order. That's part of my position here, is to keep order within the group. As long as we respect each other and we communicate our ideas during our time, then the meeting will go swimmingly, and I understand your angst, sir. We will continue with staff reports. Cindy Stanley.
Consideration for monthly accounts, please.
Make a motion, we set the accounts for payment.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, do we have any questions about any accounts?
Teeter's Trucking, still our employees, contract employees?
No.
That's the equipment and the labor part.
What line item, Larry, what line item?
I just saw Teeter's Trucking there.
Thirty-five.
Because I know one of the boys went out on his own, that's on him.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if they all were still working for him.
No, they're only at one full-time, is that right?
Oh, one of them still, other two left. Jim, that is?
Thirty.
How long is that contract for?
Dead loans are surprised. Active.
Okay, so no action needed by council, then, okay. Other questions?
They're strictly doing their sewer, right? Sewer?
Water, I think, water and sewer.
Both of them, okay.
There are surprised. And we have approval and funding for, what, the next 10 years?
Okay. Any other questions? Then? Okay. Any other questions? Then, let's vote to pay the bills. All in favor? I believe we have unanimous vote. We're gonna pay the bills. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Stanley, thank you very much. We have, I can see Lieutenant Testerman from here. We've pretty much dispensed with all the police activity. But could you give us an update on general operations?
This past weekend, Officer Proton Wellness Center, they organized a 5K. They had a week fifty-seven participants. I was able to get present. My understanding, they've bid over $800 for proceeds to go to Betsy Reed's family from Torbuck for, for Betsy Ford's family for assistance. We have Bailey, gonna be graduating academy on the 29th. We're looking forward to that. She's been doing exceptionally well. And we also brought on a new hire today, which we'll introduce at the next council meeting, on Travis's place. He was gonna be a good, good option for us. And he'll start the academy on the 30th, which may so. We can stand on...
I, I noted today, and I told Kevin about this, that they've actually hired somebody taller than him.
Thank you.
But that's, that's wonderful. Anything else, sir? Thank you for everything you do for us. Chief Hamm, EMS.
Hey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I would like to thank you for the EMS resolution. As always, I stand before you and say, you have a great group of men and women who have served in your community, Man Fire EMS. We have a few here with us tonight that came in. First off, after that, I wanna ask Mr. Hunter Dean, if he'll step up here with me. He is our newest full-time team member. Mr. Hunter Dean comes with, from us, from Tattleswell, Virginia. He is a paramedic. He's also a registered nurse and is firefighter two certified. Coming up next week, he's gonna be joining the ranks down at Man Fire EMS. We're excited to have him on board. We're bringing on a couple of additional part-time team members also. And I'm gonna try to get those folks up here before very soon, too. But Hunter?
Hunter, I'm here to introduce yourself. Avery Cornet. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Hunter did excellent in the hiring process. We, basically, all paid for the process.
Todd Mayhem.
We're really excited.
Glad to have you on board.
Moving along, as far as events go, we participated in a busy event that happened at the River Big Park. We can jump to American Police Department. I was out there on that night or two again. But I did hear that it was a pretty decent turnout and a lot of fun was had by everyone, adults and kids alike. I found out this afternoon, we're gonna be participating in a charity bagging event in Toots City this Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00 for juvenile diabetes. They gave, they taught me earlier this afternoon. I've not got that out to our team yet. But we're excited about going up there and supporting juvenile diabetes. We're also gearing up for the April Memorial Day Parade. Looking forward to Memorial Day activities. As far as our station updates go, our roofers showed up today to start repairs on the roof, more than three billion roof, back during the storm. That's been about a year ago. But we're thankful that that's underway now. As far as our April call totals go, we're at 225 calls from the month of April. And year-to-date, that brings us to about 853. We had a slow start for the year. And our numbers was falling off at April. But that's according to Mr. Tally, my statistician, has brought us back up to speed. And it's like we're gonna be on par for another busy, busy year. So, unless you guys have any questions for me and the Fire EMS room, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks. Go ahead, Karen.
Thanks.
Go to. Believe Rex Sanders is gonna speak for Ken Heath. No, he's leaving.
I'm leaving.
See you, Rick.
Okay. Economic development is doing just fine. I think Ms. Spencer would be able to tell us anything. But does anything report in economic development?
Well, they haven't, they've canceled the last two meetings. So, we haven't even met. So, because everything seems to be moving the cruisons and...
Everything's going along swimmingly?
Yes.
Okay. Great to know that that, Ken's, Ken, I saw Ken today. He's, he's looking good. He really is moving good, looking good, as good as we can look at this age. The next we have zoning and property maintenance, Todd Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Got quite a bit to report on from planning commission meetings, the last couple of meetings, the last couple of months. If you'll recall, well, first of all, the planning commission had, had made a motion and voted to move the, the planning commission meetings from 5:15 to 5:30. So, those meetings will now start at 5:30 when we have those. Couple, it might have been three months ago now, council had referred some livestock ordinances to planning commission. We had drafted a proposed draft to present to you all. But after the last meeting we had, the recommendations from county, uh, planning commission and staff would be not to allow livestock in town. Historically, years ago, when this town was laid out, you can tell by the, by the way it was laid out with the 25-foot locks, it was laid out for residential town. We never really could come to, to a, a decent decision in the planning commission of, you know, what are we gonna do about the adjacent property owners, adjoining property owners that probably, how long will we give them to remove the animals, whatnot. So, I think that the, the consensus of planning commission and myself is just we recommend not to allow livestock in town. Now, with that being said, the livestock that are here, we wouldn't allow any more than what is currently there now. And, and Mr. Atwell, if I'm leaving something out, I'm pretty sure that's what we, what the intent was there.
That's correct.
Any questions on that part?
I have a question. How many animals can a person have?
Zero now. I mean...
I know, but that you're gonna grandfather in?
Um, just the ones who's got the goats now.
Do you know how?
I, I don't know the number right now. I really don't.
What about chickens?
Pardon?
Chickens?
Chickens, we're allowed. It's our honor. We allow six and only six. Zero roosters. We have sent some letters out to some people that has got more. Some of them's been running at large. We have sent letters out for those. Those are ongoing. I think the deadline on those is probably early week from now is the deadline on those. We just sent the letters out mid-last week. So, I don't, you know, I haven't got some signed receipt back yet. So, I didn't know if they'd received them yet. So...
We had with some chicken issues in the last week.
Well, my, one of my neighbors has issue with goats in, in her, their backyard. And I've talked with Flav about that house lots of times. But what about the food? Do they feed the animals? Are they, shouldn't that be contained somehow so the mice and rats won't get into?
Anything that would fall under section 38-2, which is health and sanitation in our code. Cause we, all food stores and stuff like that should be in a container where rats and stuff can't, can't get them off. Can't want fire breaks.
Todd, is there any, do we have any designation of any property zone agriculture in the town of Marion?
We don't. And for the 22 years that I've been here, Mr. Mayor, we've never had a, a zoning for agriculture. I know when we were working through this process, I done a query on our GIS. And I think there were 62 parcels that was inside of the town limits that was one acre or more. Now, that, what that doesn't account for, it was a single parcel. So, if someone continuously hung four or five parcels, that, that didn't account for that. We were looking for how many parcels that was inside the town of Marion that was one acre or more. And I think there was 62. And, you know, most of that, Calendar Drive, Emory Hendry, State Hospital. So, I mean, most of those that were that size, they're already hung by somebody.
So, do we need to vote on that?
No.
No.
No. That's just a recommendation.
We, we need to act on it at some point. But he's just giving...
Yeah.
He's just saying, think about it.
At some point in time, we would.
The next thing is, we probably need to set a public hearing to change the verbiage on section 5-5 fences and walls in the town zone. If you all recall, it's probably been a couple of meetings ago now, somebody had requested a fence in their front yard. And I, and I decided to him what the, what the zoning was. He brought to my attention that you couldn't go to Lowe's or Blavos to readily get that. So, we're, we're wanting, the planning commission's gonna change that from it can't, in the front yard, the fence, it cannot exceed four feet. But a minimum height is still the three and a half feet. If somebody wants to, the wrought iron, cause they want a special order or something, they can still do that. So, if you all would directly schedule a public hearing on that, I'd be more than happy to.
Sounds good. Council, do we need to act on this immediately? Is, is there a, a reason that, or could we not include this in a future public hearing, like on livestock, and include those both at the public hearing? Would, would that, is that possible?
Only thing, only thing I'd say is, we've had several public hearings the same night. And they get to be quite lengthy.
Well, but they also, they also...
Don't want to schedule too many of them the same.
They also get expensive.
Yeah. Well, I knew that, but...
I know. We do have the, the public hearing on the sanitation on 16th. If you all wish, we can, I don't think this one is gonna be pretty much of an issue. We're at an increasing high. So, if you would like to do that, I'd be more than happy to add that one. Or you got one coming up on June the 2nd or something, if you'd like to add it there.
What's the time, what's the timeframe on this one? The other one, we, we thought was 30 days.
Yeah. And Mark said that we didn't have to put it on the website for 30 days. So, if we're not on there within the advertising time in the newspaper, then, then I think that would be the, the advertising.
If we could just piggyback this on one of those, I, I think we'd be okay. And that would save us several hundred dollars.
Can I make a motion to add that to the public hearing for the, the garbage ordinance?
June 16th, correct? Cindy?
I'll second that.
Yes, June 16th.
And I will go ahead and put those changes on the website tomorrow. So, we'll exceed the time that we need to.
Wonderful. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, council.
As you all are well aware of, I have sent all the big stores, our ordinance letters. And so far, as of today, I've had two of them call me. And they're synchronized. They were really nice. They were understanding. And come to find out, and, and I told them all, I said, "Listen, I don't know if you sell it or not." But to be fair, I sent everybody. The, the one that called me said, "No, they don't even sell something that you can, that a person can ingest, or absorb, or inhale, or eat." And that's really all we're, we're all concerned about. Our, our ordinance does allow them to sit, to sell accessories such as pipes and any other accessory. They just can't have any product that someone can either inhale, eat, absorb, or ingest. So, they are aware of that. One of them, it did affect. But the, the property owner was actually one who called me today. And I explained it to him. He was nice. He said, "Well, I guess I'm just trying to lose a tenant." And, you know, that, it, I said, "You don't have to lose a tenant. They just can't sell these products. They can sell everything else." So, you know, I, I guess we can expect that. So, so that's going, that's good as can be expected right now. If you all, as you all know in your email, I have sent out to all the convenience stores, too. There, again, I don't even know if they sell it. But some of the ones I've been in, most of the time you'll see a little racks of vapes. So, this letter that I sent out was really just to notify them of the code. And let them know, you know, if we do, if we do discover it in their stores, then, you know, perhaps they'll seek legal, legal opinion on what to do at that point. Any questions on that?
Does that include a pharmacy?
No, pharmacy, of course, it's not. Getting back to the, the camping thing, last week, and, and for the, it's either Thursday or Friday, I did go by Mr. Urson residence. I knocked on the door. I was gonna try to talk to him. Nobody came to the door. So, I left. So, I am gonna try to follow up with a face-to-face conversation with him prior to sending the letter. I think that's probably the best way to address all this stuff. I know that he has gone on record in, in the Smith County News and said, you know, that he, he just didn't have the heart to make them move. And, and, you know, that's his problem. But at the end of the day, state code still directs me to go to the property owner. So, I am gonna try to talk to him in person. But sometime this week, if I, I'll, I'll try another time with Mark's wife. But if I don't get, I can't talk to him. I'll go ahead and initiate a little meeting for us, camping ordinance. And we'll see what happens. You know, we talked about here all along, if, if they move from there, they gotta go somewhere. We'll just have to cross that bridge when we get there. That's all I know. But I do wanna be fair. I just, you know, I, I do want to, I do want to give everybody an opportunity who owns the property especially to, to do a concession if they want to. If not, they will just go and try to go another route.
And just to follow up, the property that is in question, there's not a railroad crossing to get to that property. So, the owner of the property actually would have to trespass over railroad property to get there. And that's in fact what, anybody that's on that property, what they're, they're doing, the railroad can prosecute them because they are trespassing. The only way, I, I suppose for them to get to that is if the town would allow a bridge to come from where the park is across the river to that property. They, they can't get there unless they go through the river or trespass over the railroad.
How, how, how much teeth does our ordinances have, in your opinion? Are they sufficient to expedite this problem? Because I'm, Jay S. is not the only one. Trish has had complaints. I've had numerous complaints when I was going door-to-door. That was by far the number one issue.
Well, I have not talked to, I have not talked to a railroad representative personally.
Yeah.
But, but Tony has a good relationship with one of the crews. And they're aware of it. I mean, they don't like any of them or something.
Okay. That might be the angle that we need.
Do they want us to enforce the trespassing?
Like I said, I've never had, I've not had a conversation. I got that second hand.
Uh, Mark, is that a, is trespassing something that if law enforcement observes and they know that it's no trespassing, that they can issue a summons for?
Well, I, I suppose they could. But the issue would be here, here we're talking about the railroad. And they fall under something different than that state or local laws. They have their own, so to speak, law enforcement.
They do. Yeah, they do. They really do. So, they live, they're basically on an island by themselves. They do pretty much what they want.
So, it's basically not our battle to fight?
It, it's a battle, from our perspective, we can't go over there without trespassing ourselves. Unless we wanna go swimming through the river or put a bridge across. And the same goes for the owner of the property. They're, they are in effect prevented from getting to that property. And, and this did come to council at one point in time. One of the prior owners actually approached the town about wanting to donate that property for some tax relief, I believe is what they were seeking. But the town couldn't use it. And so, it stopped there.
I remembered that.
But it's, so you think our ordinances are strong enough?
Well, I think it's...
On base value to?
I think it's got good verbiage in. And I know that it's, I, I do know if a, if a fine or something is not lifted. Mark said it's a misdemeanor for, class four, I think.
So, I believe that's accurate. It's a fine of up to $500.
Well, littering's $500.
Is that the property owner?
So, they're guilty of that also, simply charged.
It would be the property owner.
Would a judge determine the amount of fine?
Yes.
So, this is something that would go to court after we issue a...
Right. And it would be the judge to decide, "Well, they can't go over there to, say, leave." They, they can put no trespassing signs on their, on their side of the railroad. But they can't cross over the railroad to get to that other property to put a sign of no trespassing. So, I'm not sure that the courts would want to get involved and punish somebody that can't even protect their property, so to speak.
Maybe the courts have a idea that we have. Maybe the courts have a, uh, idea that we haven't yet.
Well, something, other municipalities have gone through, the other municipalities have gone through the same thing, and it's pretty much removed them. So, let Tony, let Tony pursue that, is my recommendation, his contacts over there.
You, uh, you say other municipalities, which ones?
Yeah, retired state trooper told me that Withville is much, much tougher than ours. On, on their, on their own property.
On their own property?
Yeah, which they own quite a bit.
But not on private property?
Well, see, in this case, nobody, Earp or us either, has authority over the railroad, nobody does. So that's what I was saying, let Tony make those contacts with his friends, and, uh, go from there.
Do that before we issue a letter?
Do what?
Do we want to do that before we issue a letter?
Well, they're cut off, if a railroad says, you know, puts up no trespass, it, they can't get to it, so they're cut off, they're on an island with no eggs, no entrance or eggs.
Mr. Earp is not on the island.
No, but they can.
But to get to the, for the, for the campers...
They have to cross the road.
Well, he can use a bullhorn.
I don't know, they're gonna pay attention to that.
But it just needs to be, uh, enforced, whatever we can do, to legal limits.
I will make an attempt tomorrow to go back over and talk to Mr. Earp, and see if I can get the conversation.
I'm pretty sure he might be a truck driver.
He, he works Monday through Friday, I think, basically eight to five, he works for Food City now.
Oh, does he, okay.
Is it here in town, Mark, that you know of?
I, I think he goes to exit twenty-two, and maybe picks up his loads there and delivers where they tell him.
Oh, he's, he's a truck driver for Navy?
You wouldn't be able to approach him at work.
No, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't suggest that anymore.
But other than that, that's all I got, if you got some more questions?
Okay, appreciate it.
Castle, anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now our county manager, Billy Hamm.
I'm not gonna report on stuff, this, these long-term projects, it's on your agenda every, every meeting. Like I said, they go slow, they're long-term projects. I will tell you that we're probably half, three quarters installed on our radio reviews. I know more by the end of the month, what the total is.
We getting data off of them?
We're getting, we're getting reviews.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty nice, so. And just real quick, uh, been up sixteen south, they finally got finished with the, with the guardrail on the bank, I think it looks pretty good. I had one complaint from a property owner that, uh, he did not like the, the new ends on the guardrail. So I had to explain to him that was the new standard for PDOT, that we had no choice but to go with their standard, so. He was one of the more traditional, rolled-end type guardrail, if you don't know about that at all. But, once I explained, he seemed to be okay with it. Uh, paving, we're continuing to try and get stuff paved, um, I think they came back today, uh, probably up on Homewood Drive, uh, working on that. I was told that they, the plant broke down, and so they left, so.
Staley Street, Hutton Street, uh, that, they look good, they, they do look good, as I'm talking about, I've not been out there to check them out. Yeah.
And I don't know that they're finished up there, but we've got a little jagged down here at, uh, at, is it Jones Street, no, up by the fire station. And as Rusty said, the roofers showed up today, so we thought that was gonna be a good conflict, but, uh, paper's pulled out ones today, so. Uh, but I talked with him, and they're, they're gonna try to work together, not get in each other's way, hopefully, we can give them a little lift to get that painted.
Um, on the, uh, I know you don't wanna go too far into special projects, but, uh, what does contractor working on final grade mean?
They're over, working on the final grade of the ballparks.
So, does that mean they're close to putting topsoil, no?
Not there yet.
Not there yet?
Mostly busting rocks, is what they've been doing for weeks and weeks.
Yeah, he's a hammer every morning. Yeah, sound carries really well from over there, yeah.
I mean, they just, well, it was a progress, and there's a lot of rock on there. And I'm talking mainly about where the parking area is, uh, planned to be, and the, and the road coming in. The other ballpark, or ball field itself is been filled, and it looks pretty good by the eyeball, but, um, topsoil will be yet to come. And, uh, but like I said, rocks, rock is the biggest time-consuming, as far as later game training.
You know, speaking of ball fields, we, we had, I don't think we mentioned the, um, baseball team and their first game coming up here very soon, too, as well.
Yeah, I had somebody ask me the other night, I don't know what, when the first one.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth of this one?
Okay.
Good. That'll be a, a boom, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna enjoy that.
Yeah.
The band boosters are getting the concessions ready, I can smell the popcorn, I can hear the crack of the bat, it's, it's gonna be absolutely wonderful to have baseball here in Marion.
Just so you know, you all know, for your information, uh, Market Street, we, we all know what a long, broad, out process Market Street has been. I fielded a phone call today complaining about it, so, uh, just so you all know, if you all get questioned, uh, spudely, I'll have him spin jump through all the permits. I signed the, uh, paperwork for, uh, permission to start construction. All the material has been ordered, so that is what we're waiting on, the material to get here, start Market Street. Uh, the structures is the biggest holdup on that, which is the main homes, uh, the last main homes that, that we bought for a project took about three months to get. So, uh, we, we're assuming that's gonna be the holdup of this material, so we're, we're estimating it's gonna be July or August before we get started on Market Street. And unless you have some questions, we've worked on budget and distributed stuff, unless you have questions about anything, that's about all I will...
Are we through with crossovers over there, behind, on the street behind CBS and all that?
Are we winning?
Are we through with the crossovers, wirelines and stuff, or whatever that street, what is it, runs into Staley there?
He's talking about Groves Close and all that.
Groves Close, yeah.
Yeah, it's already, yeah, I like it.
The reason I ask, I go by there all the time.
I like, I like was done, and then, and then, uh, you know, the hurricane come, we didn't get paid, because the paper got going in different directions. Then it got cold weather, so them people's been torn for over a year before we got papers back in here and get paid, but I like it done for the paper.
So everything's done except Payton. Reason I ask, there's a bunch of pipe laying over there.
Well, so, they, they may be in, in, uh, we're supposed to still handling that, that sort of stuff.
Still got some stuff on, Groves Close, okay.
Billy, I have just one question, Riverbend Park, the gazebo, do you know when they're gonna start working on putting that back?
We talked about that last week, um, I think, as soon as they, one of the biggest issues was, was Route sixteen, so that's done now, so, you know, we're, we're trying to get...
I've, I've just had two people ask me about it, so...
We talked about that last week, and, and, uh, and the foreman that was over, uh, the guardrail and the bank repair on sixteen, he does our concrete work, too. And I think when he got done up there, he, he went on vacation for a few days, so. He's just back to get his coordinate in there.
Thank you, thank you.
That's about all I have, wish you have some next one.
Thank you, I appreciate your brevity. And, uh, that is all we have. Council, is there anything else that you want to address tonight? No, sir. Then, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?